Any questions for Roger on our proposed changes to downtown parking?
Oh, I thought of the other comment that I needed to make is that this, this bill looks at going forward, and there was concern about the existing people in the downtown area that have permits. And the Public Works and Planning Committee, when they reviewed this, asked for language, and we've included it, that would allow us to basically grandfather in those people that have existing permits downtown, that they would be able to purchase one of these permits to be able to continue living downtown.
Okay. Any other questions for Roger on 2012-130, excuse me, 2012-140? Bob?
Just a couple of additional comments. One is that the, the people being grandfathered in are individuals while this bill is actually designed and developed to work with the landlords, and then the landlords provide the permit, so that, that's a little bit of a distinction, I guess. And the point is, is those individuals, if they move or somehow that permit is no longer valid, I guess, then no one else can pick up that permit. So eventually, you would, you would expect that at some point in time, all these individuals will no lon- there'll no longer be individual permits as a part of this program. And the second thing is, is that people get permits for a specific zone, and that doesn't permit them to park across zones necessarily. So if, I believe I'm correct on that, Roger, if they, they get a permit for the central zone, that doesn't allow them to park in the west zone, or, or if they get one for the overflow zone, it doesn't permit them to park in either the central or west zone. So, just thought I'd offer that.
Go ahead, Roger.
That, that is correct, and, you know, we're hopeful that this can be successful, that it would encourage people to move into the downtown area and live in the downtown. And we hope that we've got this crafted, that it could be expanded to other areas, either on High Street or even in, on Capitol Avenue in the future.
Okay. Any other comments on 140? Carrie?
This is a small detail, but Roger, I know at some meetings, we discussed that part of the parking garage meters on the 200 block had been left out. There was a portion. Did that get put in this bill?
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
You're talking about the area off of the alley near Bones. It, it has been added to this bill.
Bob?
Roger, one other thing, and this is a question. The, you, the total was about 250 parking spaces, I think. I think there's 151 in the, in the central and 100 in the west. About how many persons or how many potential persons might be you, you're trying to utilize these parking spaces? Do you, do you have any clue as to how many people that might be at this time, or, or even potentially if, if the properties downtown were developed?
Well, we, we presented this to the Downtown Association, and right now, we believe it's somewhere between six and 12 people that are actually utilizing this in the downtown area. But they thought there was a potential for an expansion of up to maybe as mu- many as 100 total apartments in this area. But they'll have to meet the requirements of upgrading their facilities, bringing them up to code, and, and getting permits for all of those things for, for them to qualify in the future.
I guess if we had 100 new apartments developed and occupied, that would be a good problem to have to try to figure out how to solve, wouldn't it?
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay. And any other questions on 140? All right, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2012-141.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by regulating the solicitation of contributions in employment and the sale of merchandise on highways and streets.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would reinstate a section in the code that prohibits solicitation on our busiest streets, so the, and I'm talking about, I'm sorry, commercial solicitation on our busiest streets. And on our other streets, you could still ask for a contribution with a permit. It doesn't prohibit people from being there with, with political speech or just asking for a, or making a political statement. If people wanted to stand and ask for contribution, they could still do it, but they'd be off on the right of way, or they'd be on one of our less busy streets. This was in the code for better than a decade. It was accidentally taken out when we redid the peddler's permit. If you'll recall, basically, we wiped out that chapter and replaced it with kind of an updated version of the peddler code, and that was really my fault. This didn't get put back in, so this is just putting back in what was in place there at the time.
Okay. Any questions for staff on 141? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to first reading of 142, please.
An ordinance amending the 2012-2013 budget Appendix A Personnel Schedule of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by combining authorized positions within the Department of Public Works Engineering Division.
Gail?
Thank you. This ordinance changes the personnel schedule that's in the current budget. Currently, it has one, I'm sorry, two Civil Engineer One positions authorized and two Civil Engineer Two positions authorized. This request is to allow a total of four Civil Engineer One or Two positions. It does not add any new positions. The flexibility would allow us to ha- allow for the employees' classification to meet their skills, abilities, and work production. Kind of the way that it would work is new employees would be hired in at the Civil Engineer One level. Once they gain the experience, once they've been with the city for, or have experience of at least five years, and they've obtained their professional engineer license, which is a, a very lengthy, detailed process to get that certification, that license, then the employees, of course, subject to funding, would be eligible to move to the Civil Engineer Two position. This does allow career development for our employees in those positions, and we do have this type of program set up throughout the city. Our police officers are set up with the same type of program. Many of our maintenance positions in parks and recreation, streets, wastewater, et cetera, are set up in the same way. I'd be happy to ask any, answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Gail on 142? All right, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2012-143.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the code by combining the positions of Director of Finance and Director of Information Services into the position of Assistant City Administrator.
Nathan Nicholas?
Thank you, Your Honor. This bill would combine the existing position of Director of Information Technology Services with the Director of Finance into a new director-level position to be entitled the Assistant City Administrator. This is being proposed to increase efficiency of city management. If approved, the proposal would save the city more than $100,000 a year. While it's important that the finance director have a working understanding of accounting, the city's day-to-day accounting operations are handled by our four staff accountants. In addition, investments are handled by outside registered investment advisors, although the city does not currently use any investments. Therefore, this position is now largely one of management. I feel confident that the accounting and reporting functions will continue to be handled in the same excellent fashion as we've all come to expect. The Finance and Information Technology Services Departments are closely related, and many of the functions already overlap. It is common for many cities to have IT and finance in the same department, and in fact, this was the case in Jefferson City for many years. This bill would allow us to utilize the strengths of our existing employees by elevating one position and increasing the duties of four other employees. By doing so, the city is gaining considerable savings and efficiencies. The IT perspective will, I believe, bring the combined position and emphasis on serving the needs of our internal customers and better reporting to the council. The future of finance is in embracing technology. As the department evolves from the pen and paper systems that were in effect not too long ago to cutting-edge technology, the relationship between finance and IT will only grow and strengthen. Since the transparency in our financial records is one of our top priorities, technology is the path for making these records more widely available, and the combination of these two just makes sense. We would ask the council to approve the bill.
Okay, questions on? Excuse me, questions on 2012-143? Mr. Henry, your first.
And I don't know whether or not if this is a question for Nathan or Drew, but what does this do with our charter? Does this, how does this deviate, or how does this? Because what's happened is I've gotten, I know I've gotten calls, and I've gotten some emails in regards to the city basically screwing around with, and that's what's been asked of me to ask. What happens with our charter at this point?
I think Mr. Hilbert can answer that.
Sure. It's, it's a legitimate question. I've fielded a couple of those. And it, it's a little bit complicated, so if you'll give me a couple of minutes on it. The charter says that there must be a Chief Financial Officer of the city, and the Chief Financial Officer of the city shall be the head of the Finance Department. So, if, the charter does not say the Finance Director shall be the head of the Finance Department. Later on in the charter, if you read into it, it says that the Finance Director shall sit on the Fireman's Pension Board. Well, the way you interpret statutes, the first rule of statutory interpretation is you read what it says, and if it makes sense, then you don't go any further. Another rule of statutory interpretation, which is, you, all the words have to mean something. You assume that it was written the way it was meant to be read, and that it's not a flawed document. And, you know, as I said to somebody, the charter was written by flawed people. We're, we're all flawed people. We all write thi- you know, myself certainly included. You know, we write things and we pass them that aren't, you know, perfect in the, after looking at it over time. But the charter says what it says. It says there shall be a Chief Fiscal Officer, and it says there shall be a Finance Director. And while one could read into it and say, well, maybe that's supposed to be the same person, you know, actually, if you use the proper statutory interpretation, that really implies there's two people. The Chief Fiscal Officer, who's the head of the Finance Department, and then some other person named the Finance Director. Now, I don't believe that's what they intended, but, you know, now I'm reading into it, and I'm being a, you know, liberal activist judge by deciding what, what it means and not what it says. And I don't want to be that in case anybody wants to know. So, the question is, can, who is the Chief Fiscal Officer? I'm not sure that since the charter's been enacted, we've ever had a position called Chief Fiscal Officer. We've just assigned that duty to the Finance Director, which makes sense. But, but what would happen is if you created the city, its Assistant City Administrator position, that person would be assigned the duties of the Chief Fiscal Officer, and they would also be assigned the duties of the Finance Director. And I want to mention that it, the charter does say there shall be a city, a city administrator, and the charter does say there shall be a city counselor. And so it's clear the charter intended city administrator, a city counselor, and a Chief Fiscal Officer. Everything else mentioned in there is just a reference to an office, which isn't defined as, you know, there shall be a Finance Director who shall be in control of the Finance Department. In fact, that's not what it says. So, I don't believe you're, you're violating the charter if you assign the duties of Chief Fiscal Officer to the Chief City, Assistant City Administrator. And in fact, we've been doing that since the creation of the charter because the Chief Fiscal Officer has been defined as the Finance Director.
Okay, Henry. All right, Bob?
You know, I, I think the way this ordinance is before us is written, it basically substitutes terms or titles. And I think you probably, I think we're probably well within our authority to do that, to change the titles of ordinances. But one thing that concerns me is when you read the charter, it uses the specific word, titles of Finance Director and, and Fiscal Officer. And I don't think, I, I don't think once, the one step that we have before us tonight, or that we're introducing tonight, that one ordinance, it changes ordinances, but it can't change charter. And so it would seem to me that if you're going to satisfy the charter as it's written, we would have to, to actually amend the charter to change those titles in the charter. Because I don't think you can change those titles in the charter by changing an ordinance.
Drew?
Well, I suppose the, the counterargument to that is that if you look through the code, you'll, you don't find the Chief Fiscal Officer title being the head of the Finance Department. The Finance Director's always been the head of the Finance Department. So either we've always been violating the charter, or we didn't violate the charter then, and therefore, we can assign the Chief Fiscal Officer to someone. The, the charter somewhat implies there should be a, I mean, I, I don't want to, I'm not trying to split hairs here. I'm sure, I would like to believe, that probably the charter drafters intended the Finance Director and the Chief Fiscal Officer to possibly be the same thing, but that's not what they wrote. And as I mentioned before to someone else, it's the, it's the Mel Hancock problem. You know, when, when the Hancock Amendment was passed, Mel Hancock appeared and said, "I am now the decider of what is, what violates the Hancock Amendment." And the court said, "Poppycock. You know, you, you helped draft it, but you're done." It, the, the law, the Constitution says what it says, and we'll interpret what it says. So if we look at the charter, it says the Chief Fiscal Officer shall be the head of the Finance Department. Well, either we've always violated the charter because we've always had the Finance Director be the head of the Finance Department, or we can assign the duties of the Chief Fiscal Officer to an individual. And I guess I'd argue that's what we're doing here, is assigning it to this Assistant City Administrator.
Well, and, and again, I'm certainly, I'm not an attorney.
But you did a good job earlier, though.
In any stretch of the imagination, it just seems to me, and I, and, you know, I guess I could quibble a little bit about the way you're reading that. I, I think it's very clear to me, at least, that, that it is specifying a Finance Director that, or that says the Finance Department shall be staffed with a director who shall also serve as a fiscal officer. And, but that, really, there's very, very little other reference that I can find to fiscal officer. That's really about the only time it even mentions it. And then all the rest of the time, it is, it is speaking directly to Finance Director. But my argument, I guess, if, if I want to characterize it as an argument, is that we can change all references within ordinances, but I don't see how you can change references within the charter. And quite frankly, I support, I, I really think that the organizational change is something that is workable and, and can work the way we anticipated it, the way that we debated it, discussed it the other night in the meeting. And there was a lot of, a lot of reasons why we came to the conclusion we did. I mean, a lot of, a lot of discussion was brought forth and so forth. But I just am, between now and when we have to vote on this, I, I hope you'll do some, a lot of thinking and a lot of, maybe some research as to my concerns about whether or not we need to change charter as well as changing the ordinances.
I think Carrie had her hand up. I'm sorry. Okay, Ralph?
I would ditto Councilman Scribner's comments about checking the charter closely. And also, to, to follow up on the line of conversation thus far, some of what's been said is, is als- is then followed by, well, it says that the head of the Finance Department in this section I'm reading, the head of the Finance Department, whoever is head of the Finance Department is designated the fiscal officer. But then it goes on to say qualifications, duties, and powers of the fiscal officer shall be set by ordinance. So I'm wondering what, what qualifications and duties and powers do the writers of the charter intend this individual to have?
Well, there you can answer that one. It intended for the council to decide that. It vested you guys with that authority.
Well, it says set by ordinance. So, so is this the ordinance we're discussing tonight, that ordinance that this is referring to?
Uh, well.
I, I assume there's an ordinance in.
There is.
This would suggest there's an ordinance in place that's already been debated and discussed and voted on.
Correct.
I would, I would be interested to know what the thoughts, what thoughts went in, how that ordinance turned out.
Drew, I know that, I asked, I asked Drew the other day, and Ralph's been on vacation. I think you've sent out.
I did.
Ralph has had a chance to look at it, all the different ordinances that this affects. How many was it? I didn't have a chance to read yet, Drew. I'm sorry, but I'm.
I'm not sure. I want to say there were 42.
But the council, but the council could look at that. For instance, I know the Fireman's Pension Fund is associated with that. I think the Liquor Board.
Liquor Board.
Is associated with that. But, but the council could, could read those very quickly and say, okay, this, these are the functions of Steve's old job. That, that would be possibly changing if you, if you voted on this. And if you passed, I should say.
Yeah, yeah. It's, the, the qualifications are what you, what the current council believes they ought to be, because the code is yours. You can change it as you see fit. Whoever, those were, I don't know when the actual section setting out his, the Finance Director's qualifications were, were enacted, but I, I would hazard a guess that it's probably been looked at over time and possibly modified, or maybe not.
Well, it does look, it, it's, what was it, two weeks ago when we were in committee?
Uh, yeah, it'd have been.
A while back.
It's after a council meeting, wasn't it? It wasn't a work session.
Yeah, it was a closed session. But it, it sure, it, 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 when you get a chance to listen to all the possibilities and the purposes and the angles, and study the, how the reorganization can benefit city government, uh, this, it sounds pretty good. And it ha- and I think it has legs. I think the struggle is, is, is the people that aren't, that are not, don't follow this issue, and they only see the headline perhaps, may not understand just how, how a good a possibility, how well this might serve, how well this new organization might serve city government. It, it's well worth looking at, well worth considering, and I hope the public will take the time also to see how this might serve them. Thank you.
Drew, is there an ordinance number you can refer us to that is reflective in the qualifications that we had advertised for this job? Or, because since it says in the charter that the qualifications will be set by ordinance, we came up with this, set a criteria for the advertisement of the position. Can you refer us to an ordinance that came up with that?
If you'll give me a moment, I'll tell you where the, where the qualifications are. My big fingers.
Hey, Drew? It is Section 2-352.
That is exactly what I was thinking. That's, that's the qualifications.
Had some extra time the other day. Oh, I thought, I thought we were waiting on you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you just answered the question.
No.
Oh, 2-352, yeah. That was the answer. Yeah, it's in the code. It's codified. Chapter 2, Section 352. It's Article 9, Finance Department.
Drew, there is, there is one thing I think that the council would like to see, and I think it was brought up in our closed meeting, is the job description of the new position. If we can get that in the next couple of weeks, or?
That is being put together in our office.
What's that?
The job description is being put together.
Oh, okay. When do you think we may have that?
I mean, we can get a draft out this week.
Okay. Carrie, did you have a question?
Thank you. I had a comment that I do agree with Councilman Bray in your comments. I think this is definitely a little different and creative perspective in restructuring what, what's currently being done. We have just a wonderful opportunity to, to move Bill into a position that, in a sense, he's already been doing. So even though we've added some new terminology to the positions, it, it's sort of currently been in place, so it is a little different. But I think it's, it's definitely very efficient and a smart move. I know we're saying we're saving a lot of money by not having a Finance Director, and I wouldn't be opposed in the near future to revisiting that if, if we needed a Finance Director, or whatever the person may be in that position. I think the time, though, is right now to move forward in, in having Bill Betts assume these responsibilities and roles. And I would definitely rely on the council and staff and Bill's input as to whether or not there are additional positions that would be needed in the Finance Department. So I don't think, at least in my opinion, that I've completely closed that door opportunity. But I do think that bringing Bill is such a wonderful, great opportunity. If, if you haven't worked with him yet, he's excellent. Thank you.
Any other comments on 2012-143? Dr. Pope?
Drew, when we established, I remember when we established the IT Department. I don't remember when. Did we likewise have an ordinance that set specifications for its director?
Oddly enough, no.
We didn't.
Did not. Not that I've found. I wasn't here, of course, but.
The way this ordinance is written, will this automatically preclude these, this previous ordinance, 350, or Code 2-352? Or does that not have to be dealt with, those qualifications?
Well, I'll say if.
At a later date or something, or?
I guess I'll need to separate the two issues. This would make the functional change to the code. This would not appoint any one person to the job. That would come at another meeting if you guys approve this planned change. So if there's a person in mind that you want, they would have to either fulfill the requirements of that appointment, or you'd have to amend it.
We would have to amend that part of the code.
If you wanted to change the qualifications. Yes. I think it's very difficult to talk about it. Hey, just throw this out to Madeline. Very difficult to talk about this and, uh, separate, parse these issues out. A particular individual may well qualify for that already, depending on how you look at it, or you may need to amend it, without talking about any one individual in open session.
Code 2-352.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay, any other, oh, I'm sorry. Any other questions on 2012-143? Mr. Schulte?
Uh, one quick question or request. Gail, could you provide us? I know the, the number of 100,000 has been thrown around that it's going to save the city. Could you provide us a detailed breakdown of the current budgeted amount for the Finance Director? What the proposed salary for the Assistant City Administrator would be? What the proposed increases for managers of IT, finance, procurement, and GIS would be? And then factor in the benefits? Because I don't think it's quite 100,000. I will make sure we're clear to the public on that number.
Yes.
Thank you.
Could you do that as part of those duties? I mean, is that, I'm assuming it's readily available. Mr. Scribner?
Thank you. I, one thing I would like to, to, I guess, express a little bit of disappointment, and maybe this was only my position, but I know we talked about it quite a lot in our closed session, and which is, I guess now minutes are available, and it's an open session, or open discussion about it. But we talked quite a little bit about that this only, this reorganization only made sense if it was a good thing for the city, and if it, if it was a good management reorganization, it was going to provide a better benefit for the city, irregardless of the personality, or irregardless of the, the person that might fit that position. And I, I guess I was a little disappointed to read in the paper that this only made sense because of the, the person involved. And, and I hope that's not what our discussion is and what our decision point is. I mean, I, I'm as, as supportive of retaining good personnel as any, any person in this room. And I, and I think there's a name been thrown out here several times that is probably one of the top personnel in the city, and someone that I'd like very much to retain. But my support for doing this is not in order to retain an individual. It's because I think it is a good way to reorganize the, the management of the city. And, and I would hope that that would be the, the basis on which we would make a change like this, that we wouldn't make it based on personalities, but we'd make it based on, on what's best for the city. on what's best for the city and the public.
Take a bow. Any other comments on twenty twelve, one forty-three? Seeing none, we'll move on to bills pending. We'll have third reading of twenty twelve, one thirty-three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a cost-share agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of meetings ago, you approved the city's portion of that, of this contract with the, our air traffic control service at the airport. This is the other side of it. The FAA pays eighty-two percent of that cost of service over there, and this would allow the city to enter into an agreement to receive those funds.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, question, excuse me, debate? Roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty twelve, one thirty-four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the purpose of providing bus shelters for the Transit Division.
Roger?
Thank you, Mayor. Last summer, we purchased shelters that were placed on Missouri Boulevard for our buses, and they're certainly getting a lot of use. We had also applied for a grant from MoDOT for those shelters, and I'm very pleased to report to you that we did receive that grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred and three dollars, and this allows us to receive that grant.
Any questions for Roger on twenty twelve, one thirty-four? Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we will have, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution twenty twelve, twenty-one, but first we'll have it read.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson authorizing the mayor and city clerk to renew a lease agreement with Jefferson City Aviation doing business as Jefferson City Flying Service.
Drew?
This resolution will authorize us to renew the lease at the airport with Jefferson City Flying Service. It's the first renewal of three possible renewals.
Okay, with that in mind, can we entertain a motion, please? It's been moved by Schulte, seconded by Lubert. Was that right, Bill? Okay. Any discussion or questions on the resolution twenty twelve, twenty-one? Mr. Schulte?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just make a quick comment. Michelle shared some good news with us last week, and the newspaper ran an article regarding the number of operations at the airport for two thousand and twelve. As reported, thirty thousand operations were performed, representing a seventeen percent increase over two thousand and eleven. I would suggest that our FBO, fixed base operator, Jefferson City Flying Service, played a major role in those successes. They continue to invest in the airport and our community, the line crew, maintenance shop, avionics shop, flight training department and charter services department, all doing outstanding job. Michelle noted in the press release that the airport has an economic impact in our community of fifteen to twenty million dollars. We have a great partner in Jefferson City Flying Services, and I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank them for what they do for our community and look forward to additional successes at the airport in the future. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Lubert?
What is the dollar amount involved in this lease that they pay us, of course?
Drew, do you know that offhand?
Yeah, I turned off my iPad. I don't. It's the same, they're paying whatever the scheduled rate was at the time we enacted it, and it's the same as, or it goes up a certain three percent basically each year, I believe. Doggone it. It's a fair and reasonable amount. I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Your iPad's gotten a workout tonight, hasn't it?
I'd have to look it up, but it's the same as whatever the council approved last year, plus whatever rate was approved last year, or, yeah, last year.
That okay, Bill?
Well, I just thought the public might be interested to know what that is, and maybe we could publish it somehow, or?
Sure, and I could report it next council meeting, too.
Would Roger know by chance? He's in the hallway.
You got any idea what Jeff City Flying Service's current rate is? All right.
Sorry. Anyone else you want me to ask, right now?
Well, Terry possibly could do.
Terry doesn't remember? Okay. All right. Any other questions? Any other debate? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Here, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Here, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
And with that, we are adjourned. Council members, don't forget to pick up your homework across the, what?